All right. Thank you so much. I'm going to call the meeting to order at, it looks like 5:08. Why don't we do the pledge and then we don't have to do it next time?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that, Paul. All right. Do I have a motion to go into non-public?
I can make one, Sophie.
Under, let's see, Chris, what do we want to do it under?
Let's see.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's, we'll do roll call?
Aye.
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 Nate. I wanted to say something. Can I say something?
Oh.
No?
Well, I mean, the motion was just approved.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Yeah. All right, we're going to go into non-public. Will we just go into the back room?
No, we can do it here.
All right, we're back in public session. Paul, could you give us a little update about how we're going to move the building project forward from here?
Right. So, the building subcommittee will, has agreed to bring in, mic's on. Has agreed to bring in all four of the respondents to the RFP for interviews. Prior to that, we will actually schedule a time for the four firms to walk through the building.
Okay.
And then they'll, we'll interview them and then a selection will be made and presented to the board for approval.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you very much. All right, I don't have to adjourn or anything, we're just going to go right in.
To our meeting?
Yeah.
Yep, we can go into the public meeting.
Yeah, I will. Do we have a sign sheet? Thank you. Please.
Just do a paper.
Okay. I had a sign sheet last night. Hi, Mr. G.
If someone goes from a three, four person family, does that change health insurance?
If someone goes from a what? Had baby.
Three person to a four person family, does that change insurance?
Charlie.
No, it's just single, two peer family. July first.
We don't have any suspected cases.
July 1st.
Thank you for being here. We have a sign sheet if anybody wants to do a public comment.
Give me the room with the hard walls. I'm banging my head against it.
All right, so we're going to start public comment. Is there anybody right now who is interested in public comment?
One guy.
Okay. All right, moving ahead, let's look at approval of the minutes. I think we were all here for both, so public minutes, non-public minutes, any changes?
Looked good.
Yeah, I agree. As a former note taker, I wanted to say that I thought the minutes looked great this month, though. Thank you very much.
Sharon calls.
Yeah, thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of September 25th?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Sophie. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Paul. All right, all approved? Aye. Any opposed? Great.
I'm abstaining.
And one abstaining. Okay, so 4-0-1. All right, superintendent report. Manifest and financials.
All right, so I put the manifest right there for you to sign. There's just, it's two big packages and one small package.
Okay.
And then included in your board pack is also the first financial, so it doesn't have that page compared to the prior month.
Yeah.
The first month. Across SAU 16, we had a lot of people track that we had not planned on, so that's why some areas of salaries, you'll see a little bit overspent or, and it's not overspent yet. We have the actuals and encumbrances and we always encumber the full year, to the best of our knowledge. We do, you will see the tutor's line looks over, but that's just because they're just on the wrong line. We have since corrected that. You'll just see, I believe they were bumped up to the ESP line.
Correct.
So, did anyone have any questions? We still are in a very healthy position, so at the beginning of the year, we build all the encumbrances to the best of our knowledge. We encumber things like snow plowing, because we know it's going to snow. We don't know exactly how much, but we don't want that money to be, to seem that it's available to spend, because we know at some point, we're going to have to spend it. And then as the year goes on, we change encumbrances. Every single time I drop that snow plowing encumbrance, we get a giant storm in March, but I try to, try to, try to look at it the best that we can as we go through. If we're running less buses, for example, we encumber to what we believe is happening today and we'll adjust it as we go along. So, right now, there's 3.73% remaining, but that's just because we have everything encumbered.
Okay.
Did anyone have any questions?
So, no luck on the cafeteria hiring?
We hired someone this week.
Oh, get out. Okay.
Just the HR update that they'll be starting, I believe, on Monday, the 21st.
Oh, for which position?
That's great. I'm sorry?
Which position?
Food service. We've been down two and a half people since the start of the school year.
Not in?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know if non elementary school parents know, but kids cannot get seconds right now. There is not enough staff.
Wow.
And so, yeah, it's been, it's been a big deal in certain households.
It is a big deal around.
Yeah, kids love the seconds, yeah.
We have lots of grown kids, they need their food.
Yeah.
And then in November, you'll see the first blush of our budget, Kate. Chris and I have been working super hard to get that ready for you guys next month.
All right, any questions for Molly? Okay, I've been looking forward to this. Transportation update.
So, September 30th, Kate and I met with Don Link and Sandy Rose, the first student, just to talk about transportation in general. Some really good things. So, we talked about, what's your hiring process?
They are already paying $1.25 more than they did last year. They are still having a ton of issues recruiting. They have put out nationally to recruit, they're just still waiting for drivers. They've, not only advertising in papers, but as many multimedias, or they've even done recruiting chances, or so much like a job fair. Again, just not getting what they, what they're looking for. State certification, this is an issue with all New Hampshire schools. We're really struggling with the process, it's actually taking longer than it has in years past because of staffing at the state. We did have the conversation about looking to rotate routes and says something First Student will definitely do for next year. So, those students who are on first and off last every, every year, I asked, can you please make that a change?
Okay.
It is, it is really not equitable for a kid to ride both ways for an hour and 20 minutes. So, they said, you're absolutely right, and that is something that they will look to put in the route system from year to year, so those kids are doing that.
Additionally, the swapping, so if they're like a 20 bus now, they'll be a 30 bus, so like they're, because there are waves, right? We have the wave, so that is another piece of like trying to make it so we'll arrive earlier in the afternoon.
One really good thing to report is that, one of the issues is that we wait for dismissal at the high school and that does affect here. We just hired a flagger at the high school, which is at Route 27 and it's getting the buses out quicker. That was hired on Monday, that should, we should see about a 10 to 15 minute increase on the buses getting here, because buses are not sitting in that pile.
That was a big.
So, this is something we talked about on the 30th, I went back to HR.
Interesting.
We were just about to post it, we had a member come in saying, I'm looking for additional work. We said, you are hired. And they actually started on Monday, so that is an update and that came out of that discussion. So, I'm glad to report that.
Okay, that's great.
And then we do, we were looking to add the newest driver that got certified to this route, however, two bus drivers in the meantime. One went on a maternity leave, one went, found a job elsewhere, so we still have the three other drivers who are getting certified. The goal is hopefully by the end of November, they will be on routes. One of those routes will be to add another bus route to Stratum. So, we are just in the certification process that we will get an eighth bus to Stratum and also looking at the routes, we did talk with Sandy and Don about, could you look at, you know, changing those routes? So, that might happen as early as November and changing routes, so we have less kids on it, so which can speed it up too.
Yeah.
So, that is, it's, First Student has been wonderful to work with, they've taken our suggestions. I appreciate the public coming in, because those were suggestions we didn't even think about, so that's why public comment is so important.
Yeah.
And we were able to go back. So, that's, that's my transportation update and again, we'll continue to work with that. I can try and look again in November, give you more.
The one thing that they wanted to make sure, so that in our minutes, that it would be in Sophie's reports, that it would go out to the town.
Yeah.
Was that there is the intersection of Stratum Heights and.
I saw that.
I can't, thank you. And they will have their stop signs out and people are going around them and ignoring the stop signs, like every day, seven or eight cars, no one's thinking twice about it and it's really unsafe and it's.
Wow.
So, they were hoping that would be in our minutes, that it would be reflected.
Yeah.
Awesome.
They're going around the stop sign for the bus?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is disgusting.
You have a question? May I ask a question?
Yeah, please do.
Would, would a smaller vehicle, like a van, can we make use of a van as a, as a school bus alternative? Because if you have a van, you don't need the same driving requirements, or maybe you do, I don't know.
Yeah, so we do have some vans that we use typically. We only use those for specialized transportation or athletic contests. To pick up a whole bus route would not be something we'd look at.
No, you couldn't do that, but.
We're using those for after-school hours and some of them are our own staff that has taken the necessary training or have the necessary insurance to be able to provide it. So, you, it is based on the individual driver having the correct liability to drive students. So, you would not be looking at, you know, hiring someone, but it would become down to personal liability and wanting to drive it. But it would not be, we would not recommend that for day-to-day transportation, it's for.
Well, I was just thinking about those, those children that have to be on the bus for so long.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, an exception, but okay, so it's, it's complicated, it's not, not easy. Kind of figured it was like that.
Okay, thank you so much, Chris, for following up on that.
Sure.
I'll try to follow up with that dad too, because that was a great comment. And that was. Oh, you did? Oh, okay, good. Okay, moving ahead with board reports. Building committee, do you guys have anything additional? No. Okay. Looking at the policy committee, Eric.
Policy committee meets tomorrow for the first time.
Okay.
Yep, I'll have an update next month.
Perfect. Superintendent Evaluation Committee, we met, I think, two weeks ago and we were going back and forth with superintendent on finalizing goals and I think we did achieve that. There was a lot of talk about, are they quantifiable? And so, anyway, we went back and forth and that worked out great. And then we kind of outlined the schedule for how we talk about it with the joint board and also how we talk about it with Esther moving forward. And that's a real great committee led by somebody who's done it for a long time and so, anyway, I think, I feel pretty comfortable. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer them, but I think the joint board will see the goals at the next meeting. Safety and security task force.
Yeah, so they are meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay.
For in November.
Okay, sounds great. Communications and community engagement.
Yeah, a couple of things. Number one, I wanted to put together a fireside chat about taxes and invite the public into a Zoom meeting about understanding their tax bill, specifically how the school budget impacts that. So, Molly and I looked at some dates and we think the 29th of October is going to work out. So, I'm thinking it'll be 6:00 to 7:00 PM online on Zoom, recorded so that folks can see it afterwards. And the first 20 to 30 minutes would be Molly kind of going over probably some like frequently asked questions and then opening it up to the public for questions and I can facilitate that. I've facilitated many a Zoom call in my day, so I'm happy to do that. The only problem is I don't have a professional Zoom account right now. I don't know who's.
We do.
Okay, so would I set that up with you, Chris?
Yeah, we can host it and then we'll just make you the co-facilitator on it.
Okay, cool.
That's great. I think that's outstanding.
That's really awesome.
Yeah.
Appreciate you talking about that.
Yeah.
The most recent tax rate might not be set by then. I know I'll have the school portion done, but it usually doesn't get set till early November, so if people are looking for the most current.
I think just an explanation of how it works. What are the mechanisms and, you know, to what extent the school board even has control over the budget, I think is a comment. So, maybe you and I can work on like exactly what questions and if anyone on the board has input about like what questions would be helpful, we think the public would want to know.
That's me.
Let me know and that would be helpful.
Right. Yeah, just two things. You know, Stratum's going under reassessment right now and so obviously that's going to very much come up, just so you're prepared. I'm not sure when we're getting those assessment letters. Would it be the afternoon of the 29th? But maybe we just want to.
What are you talking about? I've gotten two assessment letters, what are you?
So, but we don't know the rate.
You mean the rate. You want the rate letter. I think that's November, I think.
Is it November?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we wait then and delay until later November?
I just think I would ask David when that might be coming out.
Yeah, maybe just have the information ready and caveat the discussion with, these are not the current rates.
And everything you're talking about doesn't rely.
Right.
It doesn't impact the assessment, but that is going to be the number one question.
Right. Yeah. So, I guess, do we want to have the fireside chat before the rate comes out so that people aren't scrambling? Yes, Kate is like, yes, I do.
I think you want to keep it in as, as much as like a neutral place, because that's always going to fluctuate, right? So, if you can have it in a neutral place and explain like this is dependent on these things.
Right.
A neutral discussion is so much easier to hear than when you're already sort of elevated about things and you want them to understand the process is what you're hoping for, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. And it will be recorded. We can do that, write, record it and have that available later for folks.
The second thing I was going to say is, I always thought joint board should be information sharing, so that boards share information. This would be so great to bring to the joint board. Okay. Other boards could do it, or I don't know how many times Molly wants to do it, if they participate in it that night or whatever, but definitely share that.
Yeah, well, the information is maybe applicable to other towns too, so.
For sure.
They could watch it. And then other update, I have the strategic plan committee, I'm on that as well. And that, the first meeting is next week, but I'm out of town. I don't know if anybody wants to cover or if I should just get notes and then report back on that.
What is it?
At 5:30.
I cannot do that.
Is it in person or Zoom, Sophie?
It's okay if nobody can cover, I'll just get notes and.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the only other communication update, just waiting to hear, you know, about the building committee stuff and then kind of coming up with a plan to go backwards and seeing, thinking through like a communication plan before the board, before the bond vote of.
Yeah.
Where, where do we want to have, you know, the pre-construction manager come and do presentations?
Yeah.
And how many and at what locations? So.
All right. That's great. I'm glad you're thinking that.
Yeah.
All right, great. Any other comments?
Just a heads up, we're about 15 minutes left for public comment, if anybody has an interest.
Okay.
Those are shot feeding.
I wanted it. Okay, chair update. I think the only thing I wanted to bring up tonight is, I wasn't sure if the board was aware, but SMS has a sick bank that teachers can contribute to and then use once their sick leave is gone. And so, we had someone file today, or file a few weeks ago and I met with a small committee and then I think we're kind of always kind of redesigning the sick bank rules, but talking to Heather Murray, she was like, this is pretty innovative that SMS does this. The other districts don't necessarily have that. So, we're going to start sharing that information, those guidelines with the other schools. But it's a great committee, I just wanted everybody to be aware of it.
What is, what is it? I don't even know what it is.
Yeah, so sick bank means you, everybody contributes some of their sick leave at banks and then if you run out, and you know, at SMS, we have maternity leaves or health issues, different things come up with people's kids. And so, there was various issues that were coming up with sick.
So, people contribute their sick days to the bank, so to speak.
How do they choose to do that?
Yes.
Is it like a?
You opt-in.
It's optional.
You opt-in and you kind of say like, I want to.
But you have to contribute to then withdraw from the bank.
Correct.
And there's like a Google form, so they fill out a form and then the committee meets and reviews. Doesn't have a ton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I always had it when I was a teacher, it's not administrative, but always in the works. When I was a teacher, it was always, you could, you could only donate up to three. You could choose zero to three.
Okay.
And then.
Yeah.
Draw if you ever needed it.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. All right, moving on, SMS admin report. Okay.
Someone turned it off and now it had.
That was me, I was saving electricity. When I came in, I thought, this has been on since our staff meeting, it's been hours, it's going to burn out. And then she was like, how this get turned off? I was like, I don't know. Who did that?
Is that a new system?
Kind of roughly have a bag?
What did Perry find?
She just heard the bag.
Is it chocolate?
It'd be chocolate.
Give it up, Perry, give it up. No one's safe. Perry, come.
So, this month's presentation for the board was to touch base on a facilities update as well as a technology update and so that's what we're going to be briefly discussing this evening. Oh, can you see that? No.
I can see the wall.
Okay.
I can read it.
Can you really?
I can read that.
Yeah.
Exterior tree removal.
See if I do this.
Pavement.
You're unbelievable, I'm going to try this, let's see.
I don't think so.
Well, now you definitely can, but I'm wondering.
I can't.
Pull this up and blow the.
I can't read that door.
Right?
Pavement patching.
That was super techy of you.
Sophie aces the eyes.
No big deal.
Okay, so you can basically, it's a little bit better. I'm going to read it out loud since I never usually do that, as you know, but I just want to make sure everybody has the information. So, starting last year, when we started doing the facilities update, we sort of broke it into five different areas within the facilities and we just sort of give you some things of like that we have done over the course of the year, so you just have a sort of summary of what's been done. So, the first category that we talked about is the interior of SMS and a lot of that really has been about floor replacement. Those are the major things that have been done. I should point out that we don't highlight here the things that we do every year over and over, right? These are the things that would stand out or things that you budgeted for and then really talked about during the budgeting process. So, as you know, the cafeteria floor was replaced, the Wolves Den floor was also replaced. And then this, the spacious, now the learning commons, the carpet was replaced four years ago and we were already having seams come up and like bubbles. So, Tim, being the kind gracious human that he is, was working with the company for like a year about it and like having these really nice conversations and they were kind of not being super flexible and responsive and so he basically was like, you're making my principal mad, this needs to get fixed. I was like, you use that, you use that all you need.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the company came in the summer free of charge and actually replaced it and replaced it with a better quality of carpet, which is huge.
Oh, wow.
So, we're super, we're really happy about it, made a big difference. So, I very rarely say people don't use me as like the heavy and I'm like, yep, you can totally use me as the heavy in this circumstance. Exterior, exterior, we've done some stuff that's really been sort of closely aligned, what I would say was closely aligned with safety and security in terms of the exterior parts of the building. So, we've had a number of trees that we removed, whether that was because the tree was actually failing and you get concerned about the health of the tree. We had trees removed because they were blocking like visibility for little kids, so like those trees were removed. And then we patched pavement, as you know, out front. We had a lot of those large square pavements, blocks that were coming up because of the roots of the trees. So, we had that done, those had become a real safety hazard, people were tripping, we had a woman fall, like they were really, it was unsafe. And then we've had a bunch of new signage made, so the signage actually will be arriving really soon, but it's for preschool parking, it's for people understanding the grounds are actually closed in preschool hours. It's directionals for the main office, as you know. Grubhub and things like that have really picked up and they like pull around the back of the building, because they don't realize the main building and they're like, nope. So, there's just like a, and they're not doing anything wrong, but we are concerned when we see cars pull around.
Yeah.
Someone going through a back door that we don't know and we obviously, our policy is that you can't come in. Just some signage to sort of encourage safety and appropriate people on campus when necessary. A systems update, our intercom panel was replaced last year, as you know, it was a board discussion that we talked about, because it was, we can no longer fix it, they no longer made part of it. The biodirectional amplifier has been, has been a journey. That is an amplifier that is in our building that makes it possible for emergency personnel to talk to one another, because our building is old and lots of brick and it's been really hard for them to communicate to each other. So, this assists with their ability to communicate with each other within our building and also with the sheriff station and, what's it called? What's the, the sheriff station where they communicate?
Rockingham.
Thank you, Rockingham. So, it helps with this communication. They actually installed it once last year and wired it the wrong way. So, they had to rewire the entire thing. So, now it's up and running, both the fire and the, and police have been here to test their systems. The duct cleaning was completed, so we do about a fifth of that every year and it's just going to be a constant rotation. My first year here had never been done and so we had to have the entire thing done at one time and I think it was a wild expense and they were basically like, you want to and I think it was a wild expense, and they were basically like, you wanna do it every five years, it's something that needs to be, to keep the building healthy. As you know, the PFAS remediation is taking place. That actually, I think, was happening today, the final approval was October 6th. Did I make that up? I don't know what the results are, but I know that that meeting was today. And then I have here for you, in lovely italics, that we, as you know, we are a three boiler system. Ninety-nine percent of the time, it runs on one boiler. There's a second boiler that on a very rare occasion will kick in to support, because it's like especially cold, or something like that. And every month, Tim rotates which one of those is Boiler A and which one is Boiler B, so that they can, it just, it's much better. Our third boiler is officially kaputsky, done. So, we've had three. Quotes for that, because that needs to be done. All three companies have said, these are really old, you're replacing one, we can do one, and, but our recommendation would be to do all three at the same time, because it's the same idea of like, you come in and you, one, one setup, one breakdown, one thing. I'm not suggesting that's what we do, I'm just letting you know that's what they've said. And the reason I say I'm not suggesting that is because I think we're in the middle of such a huge, just as a board, like whether you, with all that, this doesn't make sense, I just wanted you to have all the pieces of information, so you felt like you were in the know. And we have two that are working, and most of the time we're running on one. So like, just having all the pieces. Additional structures outside, we made some repairs to the shed, so we have some like smaller sheds outside that give up equipment and things like that, some repairs for those things. We now lovingly call the exterior building to the end, the cottage.
Fancy, right? It has air conditioning. And balcony, balcony.
It's something. So we had some repairs to the cottage, and then we are replacing some of our playground equipment. We have, that's where I put the picture of it, it's a hammock, right? And that has got, sort of got like rope, but there's also metal, like entwined in the rope, and so as that starts to fray, that just becomes dangerous and uncomfortable. I think it's really important, and Chris, you mentioned this last year during budgeting season, anything that would be like a substantial update to our playground would be a substantial amount of money. So like, we put in fifteen thousand dollars into the FY25 budget, that's your net. I just wanna be really clear with us, like if, like playgrounds are like between five hundred and a hundred, five hundred thousand and a million dollars is like a playground. So I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of like, we will continue to maintain safety, we always have, we always ensure that our companies come out and check that everything is safe and secure, and then we start repairing things as they age. And then, the safety and security, as you know, at the long discussion we have, we are replacing all of the interior locking mechanisms and some of the exterior. It is a process, it has been a process, because you also then have to decide how many levels of locking you have, like what key does, what, what key doesn't do this, and, and that's all about a safety, that's a safety concern, like ninety-nine percent of the people don't need the key that Tim and I have. Right? And then there's another layer and another layer, just because you have like a room, for example, that has all of your specialized files, that is a really confidential room, and so there's only certain people who'd have that. So there's like layers to your keys, and that took us a long time working with the company to get it to the part we felt like would be manageable and safe and secure. And then, we are meeting with vendors to discuss having an internal repeater for our radio effectiveness. So, we have, I think, seventy-something radios, walkie-talkies that we carry around to communicate, because our building is large. And, there's often where you're hearing someone's response to a call you didn't hear. Or, I'm over there and I didn't hear anything that was happening over here, and that becomes a concern, particularly when we're talking about student safety, or a call for support. And so, we are looking into what that would mean for us and what that would cost in order to better support our ability to communicate within our building.
So wait, what you're saying is, you don't have enough repeaters through the building so that you can be anywhere and hear anyone else.
Correct.
On the radio.
Correct. And, for example, it's very difficult to hear recess. There's den zones. It was like, you know what I mean, or like, we have a spot down here that doesn't get, doesn't matter whose walk it is or who's on it, you can't hear anything.
You can't hear it because of background noise, or you can't hear it because of repeat, there's no repeater?
Because I'm not actually getting a signal that they.
You're not getting a signal.
And it's not super consistent, except for one spot in the building, so it really depends on like, how many radios, it's just really challenging.
Yeah.
And, for the sake of safety, it would be really important for us to be effective.
How old is that system?
We don't even have a system. We don't have one.
Well, that's the problem.
Yes. So we're looking into that, because it has become increasingly more challenging for us to be able to respond. Okay, so that is a facilities update. I apologize that you can't see a bloody thing. I will share this with you.
Oh, Sophie can.
Yes, that's unbelievable. I will share these with you, so you have them, that way they can go in the board packet.
Yep.
I can reach Stratum School Board.
So, let's see. I'm gonna open up the next one the same way. So, this might be even harder to see. Yeah. Can you shut the lights off, actually? Actually, I can.
Please get them.
Thanks, no. Okay, thanks, Tim. So, we decided to sort of think about the tech update in a variety of different ways, because we think it's really important to paint a picture of what technology is and is not within our school. So, the first part on the left is the equipment, so it's really about the hardware that we have in our building with regards to student and teacher access. And really what we highlighted in that particular area was the new line boards that you, we utilize in here. We have one in every classroom, and then we also added five more this year to sort of round out, so we now have it in preschool and some of the related arts. Again, mentioning that we have Chromebooks one-to-one for our grades two through five. And then, we really utilize iPads in K and one, more than we do any other device. The staff, currently STA staff, and when I say STA, I mean Stratum Teachers Association, because we have, obviously we have much larger staff than that. But those, that, those staff use MacBooks when we're second year of our lease, it has been great. And then our ESPs all have Chromebooks. So when we, when I started here six years ago, our ESPs did not have devices, and it was really, them having access to important information that comes through email, or something they need to know about their students, they didn't have access to, and it's been really helpful. It also supports their professional learning on in-service days, so it's been great to have that for them. And then one of the other things we thought was really important to mention here was, post-COVID, getting an accurate inventory was near impossible, because when COVID first hit, devices were given out with really not a lot of tracking about where'd they go, who took them, how many families are, or they asked for a different one, we didn't get the original back because it was broke, like that kind of stuff was really complicated. And Danny and Steve and Ashley worked really hard on finding out where every device is, organizing all of those, to the point that we had to like use a system that would alert it to somewhere else, because if it was like hiding in some bookshelf somewhere that people just didn't know, and it like, it was a ton of work, and now we full have a full inventory, which is really great. Because it also helps us know what things can no longer be updated, what things cannot support the safety, that we need to have those things, so it's been great to have that done. Bottom left is software. The first bullet that we highlighted on here was that any company that Stratum partners with, actually, any school within SAU16, that company has to sign a data privacy agreement. And I think that's really important, because we often get asked about student data, we're asked at these meetings. And New Hampshire has some of the most strict laws around that, and really does require companies that are going to sell us our software to guarantee a lot of things in order to secure student data. So I put that on here, it's like, we're really careful about that. SAU16's been really supportive of that, and it's been a great, it's been helpful. Staff and students utilize the Google Apps for Education, that is a platform that's familiar to all of our kids, we utilize it a lot for a variety of reasons. Jamf is the software year we use to push out and organize all other devices. It kind of like controls what apps go where and how that happens and updates. And then I just listed a couple of the software, the software programs that we use pretty often in our school, and we're able to actually track this, which is awesome. We get a weekly email that says, here's the apps you have, here's how much they were used, here's who used them, that's really nice in terms of budgeting, that can help us inform some decisions. And that's just a good sampling of the things that we use with our kids. I'll get to the middle after. On the far right is the Learning Commons, it's the space that you're in. Last year, when we did our tech update in October, it was actually Steve and Danny and Ashley that presented the tech update, because this was a new program, this was a new program that we were launching at SMS. And so we just wanna highlight some of the things that are happening. So there's been a lot of opportunities to integrate the technology standards that are expected in elementary school with the library standards and the media standards, and then be responsive to the curriculum through partnership with the regular ed teachers. So we're seeing a lot more integration throughout versus sort of a standalone. It really is offering an opportunity to extend learning and then being used as a demonstration of what we know. So that's been great. This year, this is something new that they launched. We had, I think it was the kindergarten and first grade, and I think now they're even talking with other grades of like, what are the basics that would be really helpful to do a quick bootcamp in every classroom with the devices, so the kids could like get it the first couple of weeks and then not have to like get it throughout the year, the smatterings, to kind of then support them so they could be more independent. And that had incredible response, people are loving it, students, teachers, and the Learning Commons staff. And then the third piece that we bulleted here is that every teacher, every grade level, an expectation is that they are partnering with the Learning Commons around a unit of study together, so that there is continued integration of those things in a way that we can then showcase to our families, because it's through technology. So that's the third piece that we added there. We are in the second year of our New Hampshire robotics grant. We were given fifteen thousand dollars last year, we're given fifteen thousand dollars this year, and this is just a few of the things that we've done with some of that money. So there's Coder Z, which is a robotics competition for our fourth and fifth graders. We have upgraded, we had Lego robots, and now we have Lego spikes, so it's like an updating of a lot of our equipment. I think you guys were in here last year, actually, where we had the drone, were you in here for that meeting? Oh, okay, so, one of the things the kids got to do was we have drones, and we had like an obstacle course in here, and they were able to like.
That was so fun.
It was awesome. So there's some like fun things that we're able to do with this grant that is providing some enrichment opportunities during the school day with our kids. And then the middle section is just like, what might you see? Like what does technology maybe look like on a, on a daily basis? So the first one on there, it says, students researching, writing, and recording podcasts. So that's one of the new softwares that we purchased this year, is a podcasting app, and so the kids are gonna be able to research, write their own scripts, and record their own podcasts, which is gonna be really cool, and this is like the medium that is so relevant to them. And then also requires the research, which is the skills we want them to do. And, along with that, which I think is, I talk about later, all of these things are awesome, but they're also creating an opportunity for kids to really learn to understand what is a truly reliable and valid source. And when I think about the skills that we want kids to leave here with, it is the ability to access information and then know how to find out if it's actual information that's worthwhile and valid and reliable. And through these collaborations, through these integrated projects, through these, these opportunities, that is a necessary skill, and it's practice in a really safe environment, because we're there to double check, we're there to coach in and teach through, versus sort of just doing it without adult sort of facilitation, and that sort of checks imbalance. So that feels really good, and it's such an important part. We also have Sora, which is a digital library, and the reason it's on here is we're often talking about creating opportunities for access. And so, there are students who have incredible passions and know a lot about things and wanna know more, but they may not have the reading skills yet to attack a text that would have that information. And so this provides the opportunity for it to be read to them. So they can gather all that information, they can create really great schema, even though they might not be ready to attack the text reading wise. And, it creates awesome opportunities for assistive technology. So we feel really good about some of those opportunities. Recording and sharing learning that is then uploaded into Seesaw. Demonstrations of learning, I talk about showcases. The idea of really good collaboration. So, peer collaboration, collaboration with people outside of the building, collaboration with family, collaboration with friends, it really creates opportunities for learning, which is such a social activity. And then, assessment taking. So this provides, because of the level of technology that the board has supported, with the idea of it being one-to-one, we're able to utilize a variety of different assessment platforms and use that to gather data on our students. So that's sort of like, what you might see. Any questions about that? I have one more slide to share about tech.
And I know some of those are available to parents at home, too, right?
Absolutely, yep. And a lot of our kids have the ability to sign in at home, and they then only have access to the things we've given them access to, but they can access them from home. That has proven really helpful, whether it's a student is traveling and they're gonna be gone for a while, and so they have access that way. They're had surgery, they have their tonsils out, but they don't wanna be three weeks behind school or two weeks behind, they can access some of it that way. So there, it does create some opportunities to keep engaged with school when you're not present. At the last meeting, we talked about, I think it was the phone policy came up briefly, phone and smartwatch policy came up briefly, and I mentioned that SMS has a technology position statement, it's in our family handbook. And I mentioned that there was a group of us that really felt like that was a great starting position statement put together, but really felt like we wanted to sort of spend some more time with it and think about how that could evolve to better align with sort of our core values, the current research that's coming out, and best practice. And I wanted to just sort of mention that we had our first meeting, internal meeting. Our goals are really, so I wanna mention, we've had one meeting, so our goals are beginning to form. But we really feel like it's important to define technology. So easy to sort of talk about social media as technology right now, because it is such a big deal, and we wanna make sure that that's not the message we're sending out. Technology has a lot of value in education. Social media might not be that piece, but being able to separate those out, like robotics are a huge part of technology and have a ton of value. Coding is a really important part, has a ton of value. And we really wanna be able to define those, so that when we're talking in public or having a meeting with a family, we're all talking about the same thing. Otherwise, it can get really mushy and then really hard to navigate. We wanna do, we want to do a lot of research, we wanna synthesize and analyze that information, because we wanna better understand the benefits and the negative impacts of the various technologies, because there is a lot of research coming out right now, and just like anything else that comes out in education, you wanna like, who's publishing this research? Is this meta-analysis, and are they actually comparing apples to apples? Are they comparing all the studies that were done about this topic without thinking about the variables that contributed to those studies? So it's really important for us to spend time doing this, and we wanna be really thoughtful about the process. We wanna outline what technology looks like at SMS, so families have a really good idea of what's offered during the day versus what might be offered as an enrichment, so there's some clarity around that. We wanna build a bank of resources for educators, students, and families. And then the last piece on here is, we wanna create opportunities for dialogue and learning with the community. So we're gonna be seeking to see if there are family members that wanna join this committee, are there community members that wanna join this committee as it grows? Because it is about fostering our children, and the children belong to every member of this community. And so we'd really like to be able to see that become a collective, shared effort in, in what that looks like. And a big piece, or a big part of that conversation was how important it is to like not make this a conversation of like, shame on you because you let your kid use an iPad for thirty minutes. As a parent, there are times, I'm gonna give you an iPad because I just need to breathe, and that's actually better for all of us, right? Like, we don't wanna make this a shame thing, that's not it. We wanna make it, as we learn about the benefits, let's utilize it for that. As we learn about the slippery side of that, where it can not, where it can negatively impact, let's work through that. Really an collaborative effort, so that's important to that, this committee. I talk about known benefits, we already know some of the benefits, there've been proven to be benefits, we see them every day, so they're there. And then, at the bottom, it just talks about like, what is next for us? So we're meeting bi-weekly right now, we're gonna gather research. We were thinking sometime either November or December before we invited other people in, so our feet were solid on the ground as a committee before we sort of grew. And then, looking at potential opportunities for a community read, and offering to host those, so we can start that dialogue. So I just wanted to sort of give an update, given that I had mentioned it briefly in September. It's a lot, I've never talked that much.
It's great.
Quickly to you guys. Any questions about any of it?
I have a, maybe a random question. I know it's more relevant, maybe like for older grades, but have you all talked like with the technology positions? And again, I don't know, like with the Chromebooks, like how they're obviously restricted, certain apps and things. Like, AI usage for like, yeah.
No, so there's a, there's an actual committee, SAU-wide committee, that is actually looking at AI, doing all the research, talking with different organizations about how it's managed, what's the benefits, how does it, what is, how does that impact the classroom? And I think, so that's being done at the SAU level, it's not part of what this has been. What, what I would argue at our grade level or our age group is that AI can be like a brainstorm, it can be a starter, but it's also really important for us to help kids understand that like, notice that that's not your voice. Notice how that you could put the same prompt in three times, you get almost the exact same thing, like helping them understand that, so that it should be a tool they use, right? Like, we don't wanna say don't use it, we want them to use it strategically and thoughtfully. Just like all other technology, we also understand that that gets much more complicated as kids get older.
Sure.
But we have an SAU committee that's really sort of diving in deeply into then talking about what policy or procedure could look like within SAU16.
Yeah, that's our next work, Tanya, is that we actually, we have an acceptable use policy, and in there, they embedded AI last year, and AI has really taken off from the time that it was approved to this year. So, we are actually going to write an AI policy that we can give to the policy committee, because we want students to be able to use it, but we want them to be able to use it responsibly, and we also wanna promote student thinking. We don't want to promote AI thinking. So, we're, we're in the depths of writing that, to hopefully our goal is to have that done by December to get to the policy committee, so we can hopefully see it here at this board for January. So that's our, that's our next steps.
It's gonna be a shift in instructional practice.
Oh.
As a teacher, you're gonna have to be like, I'm gonna have to shift my practice to ensure that's not what's coming in.
Exactly.
And that's, it's like, when I was a high school teacher when Spark Notes came out, it was the same idea, like I had to shift my practice, and that wasn't, and it wasn't like, don't use Spark Notes, but let's, let's start understanding the short endings, like I think it's just a shift in instructional practice.
Thank you.
Okay, I was just gonna ask you about, I think the, a lot of the concern, I know when Rachel, I saw it in the notes, I wasn't here last time, spoke, and she had recommended a book to me, The Anxious Generation, which is really great. Like, I'd recommend it to everybody, fantastic.
I devoured that thing, I couldn't stop myself.
Yeah, it's unbelievable. I think most of the concern is around making sure that we stay socialized. Like, it's, especially at the younger ages, I don't think they're, hopefully they're not on social media as much as middle school and high schoolers. So, I think that our, the existing just framework for the way that you run the school doesn't include a lot of eyes on glass when there could be socialization.
Ever. Period. The time it's really used, I'll actually, I can give you the examples of when it's really used, like, for our kids, really in K one and two, it's taking pictures or recording themselves to upload to Seesaw. Like, and it's not, like in isolation, they're filming each other, they're talking, they're redoing it, they're, I mean, it's not like an isolated activity. But that is when you would see it, but that's once a week for like fifteen minutes, really, that's not done. In grades two through five, there is a level of research that is done on them in order to write, you know, a nonfiction piece. There is, in fifth grade, they often organize their day on Google Slides, and so like at the beginning of the day, at the start of their morning meeting, they're like, we're reviewing and saying like, you're gonna click on here to get to this, you're gonna click, but it's not like, I'm sitting in front of my computer for twenty to thirty minutes three times a day. So, no, we, I mean, we wouldn't, we do not use a lot of technology in that way.
I ask because I think, like, it'll be interesting to see what you come out of this with, because I think ultimately, we wanna create, we wanna have something that goes back to more of a policy for SMS that can be adopted this more, right? I mean, that's kind of one of our goals, and I think goal of the policy committee, so. But just, it'll be interesting to see what you come up with.
It's an entire organization, we all have to work together on it. I'm like, hmm, it's a real strong.
Okay, thanks. When, when do you anticipate having, like this work that you're doing that could maybe help?
It'll be a year, I don't, I mean, I think it's gonna, we're gonna meet every other week, probably for the entire school year, because I do think part of, so like, I finished Anxious Generation, and I was like, first of all, I've been saying play-based childhood my entire life, and nobody was listening, thank God someone's listening. But then, the second piece for me was like that, that piece about social media. I wanna make sure, like, I don't wanna be that person that gets sucked into that vortex and think that's the only research, because I do think he's, he's intending to make a point, right? So his research is gonna be supporting his, so it's really important for us to be really thoughtful and conscious of like, what is the other research telling us? And so I think it's gonna take us a year to really dig that through. And I think we wanna be really sure about like, how do we start talking about it with our families so it feels collective, and that we end up with a shared understanding? Or we're gonna always be at odds, I think, and I think our goal is to really not be at odds with our families, but to be collectively supportive about it.
Right, I mean, ultimately, I think, one of the things that comes out of his recommendation is for people to, Right. I mean, ultimately, I think one of the things that comes out of his recommendation is for people to, you kind of have to work together as families to set a, set the environment that you want to exist.
Yeah. I met with one mom and we were talking about, she's like, I would love to find other adults that would like meet after school on a Friday and just be like, I'll be out here with the kids. I'm not trying, and unstructured by kids, but just so there's at least one adult like there. Um, so there are families that are reaching out, like, how do I do that? And I'd be like, you can reach out to this family, like they might be a really nice place to start. Um, because I think you're right, it is going to be a community effort to be able to think differently about what childhood could look like for our kids.
Just thinking if we do something different like that to communicate that would be kind of cool. So the difference in which in unstructured play is like, we got kids that do like sports and other things and got kids in dance and softball. That's structured play. They're looking to an adult, tell you the rules, how to do all the stuff. The idea is that there's not as much unstructured play. And so if we can get something like that, like a meetup or
It's basically like they learn to navigate their surroundings by taking a risk that feels comfortable for them, by conflict management. But like on board, you've got to figure that out. It's really about building all the skills that will help them navigate a complex world, um, without adult intervention.
I was just thinking about how we could get a message out if we actually.
Well, the SMS newsletter.
Yeah, right.
Internally, I think would be the right appropriate channel and/or the PTO newsletter.
Yeah.
There are a couple, um, uh, adults on the PTO that feel really strongly about this and would love to partner with other people to think of ideas.
Well, I think too, just as a parent, knowing another parent feels similarly. I mean, that's so powerful that you could say your kid, no, not everyone has one.
Well, like it's actually okay to ride your bike.
Yeah.
Down the street, like there's some conversations about that.
I have a copy if anybody wants to borrow it.
Yeah, I want to listen to it on tape.
Yeah.
If you have Spotify, I don't know if anybody has Spotify, but that it's free audiobook on Spotify.
Oh, okay. All right.
And there's tomatoes from the farm.
I know, I'm hungry. All right. Um, that sounds great. I just wanted to, um, mention a couple other things. Um, composting, amazing. I'm so glad that's coming back. Yeah. And just think about, um, that's also a great opportunity for the board if anybody wants to come to the school and volunteer. I know they're looking for parents.
Parents square today.
Yeah. They're, um, hoping for parents to come in. So I'm going to come in next week, but, um, great. That's awesome. And, um, freaking Gordon Corman.
Come on, insane.
What are you talking about?
We have the most amazing experiences.
Author.
It's so thrilling. He's such a writer.
He's written 130 books. And like kids devour, like they're the books the kids like
They turn them to inter readers.
They don't want to give them away. Like they wait for the next one to come out, like two more weeks.
Masterminds, like, yeah. I know.
That's great.
Get an autograph. Will they get an autograph?
It's amazing. I don't think she did. And, um, did you guys know it was coming? And yeah, okay.
Yeah, he was coming to town to go to, coming to the local area to go to a couple of their schools. Okay. Connection school, the school. So she kind of stole him for a day.
Okay, yeah, amazing. So great. So thank you. All right, um.
I had, I had one.
Yeah, please do.
So.
Old business?
Oh, is it old? I don't have old business.
Yeah, let's just finish up old business and then I know, um, Tanya has some new business.
I have an old business too.
Okay, great. So looking at old business, um, finalizing SMS board goals. The only, um, feedback I got was from Tanya. Do you want to talk about it for a minute? Kind of plays in.
Yeah, no, I initially, um, had some feedback about the board goal, um, related to technology because it didn't mention, um, anything regarding like the use of like cell phones, um, and updating the cell phone policy. Um, but I think like I'm going to retract some of the, those changes. I'm fine with the way it's written.
Okay.
Um, because I think, uh, it sounds like Eric is already working on the cell phone policy.
Yeah.
Taking that to the, um, policy committee. Um, and so the goal as it's written, I'm fine with, with us talking about like technology at the school.
Yeah.
So I'm, I am good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right. So we'll finalize those and have them on the next agenda.
Eric, if everyone's good, are you ready to adopt them today?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Sounds good. Uh, so just a motion. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the board goals as discussed last week?
So moved.
Thanks, Tanya. Do you have a second? I'll second Sophie. All right. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great.
All right, perfect. All right. Well, you had old business?
Yeah, I wanted to check in about the police detail, what's happening with it.
I was thinking about that too.
Is it happening this year? Is it, I didn't see it in the budget for next year. Like what's going on?
Yeah. Do you?
So the last time I came out, but a board meeting, we had talked about, I had shared what, um, Chief King and I had talked about. And it seemed like there was a little bit of reservation. There were questions that you guys had because we had talked about, they might be coming in the building. They might be, and you guys, we just haven't followed up from them. So if you have questions, I can go back to Chief King and ask like some clarity around that. I do know they've actually been hired quite a few, they've hired a couple.
Yeah, right.
Exaggeration. They have hired two additional officers, so they might be more available. I know that was one of the concerns last year. Um, but I think we would need a better idea of what you were hoping they would do or not do. Because when I had met with him, he was like, they might even come to the building and they get to know the kids and that kind of thing. And then it was like, but if it's inconsistent and someone else, I think that might've been part of the reservation that I had heard. I don't want to speak for anybody, but I know there was some reservation as we talked about details last time. This was like.
Are they happening now?
No, I have not started that. No.
No, okay.
I mean, I do often see cars around and.
They've been great.
Yeah.
Because they're, because there's new officers.
Right.
Trying to get, um, they hire a part-time person that is helping, I believe it's, um, CMS right now is this resource officer. He's come over a couple of times to introduce himself. He used to work here, um, in Stratum and he's back. So like we've had some people just coming and saying, we've just been around.
What, what were the minimum shifts that they would do? Like what's the minimum?
Four hours.
Four hour, right. That's what I thought.
And what did we have last year? We landed on two four-hour shifts a week?
That was your original plan. And then when we had to reduce the budget, it went to one.
To one.
Right.
One four-hour shift.
A week. Yep.
But I, I think one of our thoughts was like, if it could be sort of randomized so that
Sure.
Presence would seen more.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we should have it again this year and future years. Um, we can look at, um, how much was it per year to do one, once a week at four hours?
FY25 ended up being close to like 14,000 if I remember. I don't.
That's, that's my memory too, is 14 for one.
And we could go back in the minutes and look at what the cost was per four hours. But I think that's what we kind of figured it out to be.
Yeah.
I, before, I would want to know specifically what you would find acceptable or not acceptable. So I can tell Chief King next, I think clarity would be really important.
And what pool of funding did it come out of? I'm trying to remember.
Safety and security and the operating budget.
Yep. We have a line item in there. Yeah. So if we don't use it, it would just get returned back to the general fund for whatever we want.
Okay. Um, so I guess what are our next steps? Are we looking for a proposal tonight, discussion? Like I just wanted to bring it back up to restart the conversation. Um, how do we, does anyone want to have a thought of how to move forward? Yes. Are there questions that need to be answered, Kate, or do we just need to have a proposal?
What's the easiest, like to come up with the things that we don't want?
Sure.
To happen? And then everything else is okay or?
I, you could give me a list of don'ts. I could meet with Chief King and he could be like, okay. And these are the things I'm thinking and I could bring it back to you. I mean, I'm happy to do, if you're like, I don't actually want them in the building. I just want them around the grounds. And that's, that's a place to start. And then it would, I could at least try to line that up. And it could be that they're just around the grounds or, you know, out at recess, but they're not coming in the building and making sort of that presence feel a little bit more intense. Like that could be part of it. I don't, it's really up to you. Um, and then I just want to make sure I follow up with Chief King with some clarity because when he and I met and I shared some of the details, there was definitely some like, we need to talk some more about that before we line it up.
And this is once a week?
That's what we did last year. We could propose something different for this year.
And, uh, did I hear that, uh, someone say randomly? Not the same, not the same time or day every week.
Correct.
I think is good. It should be random.
Yep.
So this is a, so this is a police officer that will come by in a cruiser?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So his cruiser's parked out there and he gets out and he kind of walks around and.
That's how we described it originally.
Well, I, I think also mainly just sits there.
He sits there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
In the cruiser?
Just sits there. I mean, I guess I would almost throw it back to you guys. Like, has anybody voiced how it would feel to have them walking around outside versus in the building? Like, I'm not here. So I feel like that's not up to, that's not my call. You know what I mean? To say like what to do?
My concern would be that because we want it to be random for the purpose of like it not being predictable thing, it would be harder than communicate to the community. Like, hey, it's going to be, like, you know what I mean? Like I would be giving it away. So I do think it is unsettling for kids and people to have a randomly, because it's not going to be the same person. We know that it won't be the same officer every time. So I do think that's a little unsettling that there's a stranger officer we hear every once in a while. Feels like, is there something wrong, right? That people have that, like even kids have that instinct. Like Wednesday, we had to cancel the press conference meet and kids' assumption was something terrible was happening. And so like, that's just not a feeling you want to create if you can avoid it. So an officer sitting outside in their car isn't going to draw any, right? It's not going to draw a response of like student nerves. I don't believe.
I have, I had an experience last week with a police officer right in front of a school. But I think might have merit. And it was, um, I was driving by, um, a middle school in Greenland. And there was a cruiser sitting out on the public road. Actually stopped to talk to him for another reason, but I think it serves two purposes. Keeps, keeps the speed down and it, it provides the law enforcement, a law enforcement presence that you're looking for. But the kids don't necessarily see it because he's out on the main road. So what if you had the cruiser out on the main road here on the other side of the trees, um, for half a day randomly? Is that?
Yeah, that, that was the conversation.
Isn't it? Well, I think, yeah, they parked right here, right?
They park right across.
So in the morning, um, there's a cruiser that's across the street, like where we access our pump house.
Right.
Across there. Um, they could be there, they could park in our bus loop and just be in our bus loop. They could be across the street. You guys could sort of have that, as it, where you think is most appropriate. They could be in the side parking lot. Nobody ever sees anybody. That's a stranger would be the only person that would go over there. Then it's not visiting, you know what I mean? Like you could make a decision and say, here are the three spots that we would be comfortable with. What we don't want is you getting out of your cruiser and whatever, like you can come up with whatever feels comfortable. I do think it's, it would be unsettling for kids to have a different police officer frequently in the building.
Well, wouldn't as close to the front entrance as possible be ideal?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, the point of it is in this case that they need to act, that if they're here.
Yeah.
Close as possible without causing, you know, discontent and kind of like
Yeah.
An, an easy feeling inside. So I would want them to be like in the bus loop or right.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's, 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 it's a half a day, um, once a week randomly. And the chances that they're going to be there at the time that they're needed for some type of emergency is, is low. It's a low chance. I'd rather see them outside on the, on the, uh, on the street as a deterrent to speeding. And it kind of does everything else. I mean, the police are there. People sort of see them, but they don't see them. It keeps them away. The kids don't have to see them and go, oh, what are the police here for? In other words, if you wanted, if you wanted someone here to be, uh, available for a, an emergency, you kind of have to have them here a lot more often. Anyways.
Okay. You make valid points.
I guess I would just say, um, it's not an idea I'm incredibly comfortable with. I think that people, you know, I do see police cruisers here all the time, just kind of circling the parking lot or, you know, patrolling in the mornings. I guess I also just feel like, you know, we're looking at a 35 grand expenditure. Like, is this something that we really want to do this year?
Oh, 35 potentially for the building, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it was something that was brought to us by the public, you know, and they got a lot of support for it. So that's why I'm thinking of it.
Right.
Um.
I know. I feel like we're kind of dropping the ball on what.
Yeah, same.
I'm, I personally, I agree. I'm fine with just in your car, be in your car somewhere around, very close by or whatever. Not come in if that, like, that's enough guidance to get something going. I'm happy with that. I don't know.
But what was it? Was it 14 or did I hear 35?
No. No, I'm just saying that the project managers, that 35 grand has to come from somewhere.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's apples and oranges, but I'm just saying we're spending money.
Oh, yeah, okay. You, you're talking about the, the building. Yeah, okay. Yep.
I wonder if possible next steps is I reach out to Chief King, so that we had another conversation. This is what we're thinking. What do you think the availability is right now? Like again, it was a year ago when I was having that conversation. If he's like, yep, we can do that, I'll, I'll, he'll post it essentially in its first dibs to people in Stratum and then it goes out to like the local area. I can follow up with you guys saying, yep, he thought it would be really easy to fill, but we're going to get on it. We're going to start. Or like, he's like, here's the thing, and that way informs your decisions for FY26 budgeting as well. So at least by November, I come back with like, yes, we're already starting and here's the contract you need to sign. Cause it'll be like a memorandum of understanding or some contract or something. And here's what you should be thinking about in terms of budgeting for FY26. Does that feel like a possible next step?
Yeah, that sounds good. Um, do you want me to communicate that in my communication to the public or hold off on that for now?
I think let's wait till we talk to
Yeah.
Chief King.
Okay.
Cause if he says it's impossible, we're stretched so tight right now.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's, it was a staffing issue last year too.
True. Okay. So I'll not put it in the notes this one, but.
Yeah. I mean, it'll obviously be in the meeting minutes, but not maybe in the communication.
Yep. Okay. Great.
All right. Any other old business? Any new business?
Yeah. So I have one. Um, it's, it's in a, it's probably in a larger context. So I've gotten from like multiple constituents, but about different things, but related to the same issue. I think I've mentioned this before, like, how do we actually know we're in compliance with their own policies or in compliance with the law? So we had one, I think, I can't remember what the requirement is for the student data, data privacy. So you brought that up tonight, Kate. The law require, RSA requires that we present our policy on student data and then we report against student data to the board once a year. I've been here for like three years. I don't think I've ever seen that. So I don't think we're doing that. The data, student privacy data, what our policy is on it and how we've complied with that presented to the board.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know what you meant.
Yeah. So that, that's, it's just an example.
Okay.
And I don't know how many other policies we have out there or how many other laws out there. We have something on the books where we're supposed to do it. I'm almost thinking of throwing that into AI and like chat GPT and just asking it to summarize like, how many things do I need to do? And I think it could probably do a pretty good job of it. Another one that constituent mentioned today was HB 1014, which is the civics, the civics requirement for teaching civics. And in that it says you have to list holidays in a particular way. I think it references 288, about one or something.
I think our calendars were adjusted this year in response to that.
Right. So we had some that were, must've been out there that said Indigenous Peoples' Day and not Columbus Day.
I think last spring they were, and then we updated all of them this summer.
Okay. Um, well, I can go back and just ask this individual, but they said they saw it somewhere. It's apparent to somebody who was here. So there may have been some correspondence. So all I'm saying is I think there are laws that come out. This one was like, only went into effect in September.
Right. There's this fall and we fixed them.
Right.
All of last year's did not.
Okay. Um, so I'm just saying it would be helpful to somehow have some kind of audit on what that looks like to make sure that we're actually complying. I feel like it's just important from a board perspective, not like a you guy. I don't think anybody's out trying to not comply. I'm just like, our responsibilities are on governance. How do we know we're actually doing the things that we're supposed to be doing?
So I think it's a great question and I think you should bring that up tomorrow with Heather, cause then she can give it to you. Over the last three years, we've held a policy audit at the SAU level. We've gone through probably 250 policies to make sure we're in compliance. And over the last three years, we've had a hundred new policies that have come through or laws that have come through, through our, our local.
It's a monumental task.
So we, we're, we're constantly playing catch up. So if something passes, um, you know, just on October 1st, the food service, we've got a law on how we're going to have to do spending. So we didn't budget for that, but October 1st, the federal government says this is how you're going to have to do spending moving forward. So, um, I, I think it's a great idea, but I think Heather can give you a really good idea, Eric, of how we audit internally. Because that's why we have the policy committee is to go through either things that are, there's recommended policies and there's required policies. So any required policies, we're trying to bring to the, the policy committee immediately. Then recommended, we bring second because those are not necessary. Uh, the required, we bring to you either if there's changes. So that's what you'll get tomorrow night, required changes in policy. But it's a great question and she'll be able to give you a much better answer of how, how quickly we audit. And I will be honest that there's probably one or two that are missed or we haven't vetted it yet because it's an old policy. And we're still following some, some old rules that we need to look at more closely.
Yeah. Again, I don't think anybody's maliciously trying to like be out.
Nope.
I just think there's so many things that are out there. Like I've gone to try to download all of just SMS's policies. And, and the website doesn't make it easy. It's a lot.
Yeah.
And I thought, well, I'll just go to like Staples and get them printed out. It's really, really hard to do all that stuff to then go through it. And then they're constantly being updated.
Right.
And I just fear that we're not actually like, cause if we're going to create an agenda too for like, well, what do I, what do we need to do at least this year? Well, we need to have this report and we need to have that report. We need to have this report. We'll have to be able to have.
I'm just even wondering like who they sit under. I think that's a valid question. Like some of them naturally sit under a bit like transportation. Like, you know what I mean? Like, how do they sit? I don't know. I don't have that answer. Based on your question, I have a lot of questions.
Yeah. All right. Well, I'll, I'll bring it up tomorrow and I'll come back.
Thank you.
Update everybody on what I hear.
I just, if you don't mind me tacking on to your policy here. Um, so the HB 101, 1014, I, I did, I did get the same email. So I just wanted to like go into this, um, the specific example, which I did find on the SMS website is the lunch menu for October. The specific example, which I did find on the SMS website, is the lunch menu for October. And so I think that's, that's the only one that I could see, but it has.
Didn't hear it. Say it again.
Yeah, the lunch menu for October.
I did not look there.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Indigenous Peoples' Day as opposed to Columbus Day.
See, this is material.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got the information, so I changed all school calendars.
Right.
And the teachers know. I don't know that I would have thought about, so I didn't, I did, I did not think of that. And I did not alert Anne. I said, all teachers, make sure your calendar updated. I'm updating all SMS. Yeah.
Wouldn't have thought of lunch menu.
I didn't.
Good old Columbus lives.
I will get her all the exact ones because there was, I think, eleven that we had to like be really conscious of. I'll make sure she knows. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was like, what do you mean? I know I went to all.
All right, any other new business? All right, we have a non-public?
We do. Under letter C, we have two to discuss.
Do we have a motion to go into non-public? Again, under C. Thank you, Eric. All right, roll call.
Aye.
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 Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the personnel request.
All right, uh, do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.